I'm good. All right. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on what is today. Today is September 20th, 2023. Called order the Planning and Zoning Board meeting for September. Before we start, if everybody would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, for just a little feedback, I don't know where it's coming from, but we'll figure that out as we go. So I know we have a quorum, but just to announce it, we've got Steve Gannon, Patrick McTeague, and Jay Scheckman. And then also, we've got Marilyn Mamanu and Shari McCartney. So we do have a quorum. If I could get approval from the minutes of the August 16th. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any corrections or discussion?
Just for the record, Mrs. McCartney, for the first and the second was...
Steve.
Thank you.
Any corrections or discussion before we vote? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none. Please let the record reflect that Brad Cohen has joined us.
Just for you, Brad.
As has Mary Furtick.
One, two.
Testing.
I'm not green, but I think it's working.
You got those two? Okay, thank you. All right. We checked you as not being here and signed your name. Yeah, all right. So let's go ahead and hear the first case, case number UDPZ23005. And as Mr. Shine's coming up, let's do disclosures, starting down there with you, Steve.
Site visit.
None.
Patrick, none.
Jay Scheckman, no disclosures.
Brad Cohen, none.
Marilyn Mamanu, just Google search.
Sorry.
I have none.
And I have no disclosures.
May I swear in Andrew?
I'm sorry?
May I swear in Andrew? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
He's a lawyer.
Just for the record, I also did a Google search.
Little search, okay.
All right.
I...
For the record, show that Mr. Baranco is joining us as well.
Oh, look at that.
Andrew, the floor is yours.
Shall we wait for Mr. Baranco?
He's got excellent ears.
Good evening, Chair members of the board. Andrew Shine with Lockery and Chockeys here representing the property owner. Tonight is a rezoning. It's a couple of parcels, and it's called the Rattus Corporate Center, essentially just an office park there. The reason that we're asking for this rezoning is twofold. One, there's a business, and I'll have to point to it. In this building here, the Arizona College of Nursing, it's a trade school. They want to move into, not move into, but expand into this building over here. This is the existing zoning of the site, and this is all county zoning. This is the second reason why we want to rezone. It's all county zoning. The Arizona College of Nursing is in the B2 parcel over there, and they want to move into the Office Park parcel. For some reason, trade schools are not permitted in the county Office Park zoning. So the main driver of this request was to allow the Arizona College of Nursing to expand into the other building. The second reason is this is county zoning. When it was originally annexed by the city, I believe it was around 20 years ago, they changed the future land use designation of the property to City of Fort Lauderdale Future Land Use Commercial and Office Park, but the zoning was never changed. So now, whenever they want to do anything on the site, even if it's just landscaping or signage, the City of Fort Lauderdale zoning department has to go to the county zoning, which is constantly changing. So we figured, let's just get this under city zoning finally. And we came on the Commerce Center zoning district for that. We originally proposed B1. It's a little bit more liberal than Commerce Center and allows more things. Staff had suggested we rezoned to Commerce Center instead, since it's more fitting for an office park, and the permitted uses work. So that's why we picked Commerce Center. But that's it. It's a fairly simple request, just rezoning it to a city zoning district that fits the uses that are in there now.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant's counsel? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to open this up for public discussion. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to be heard on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
Just disclosures? I didn't, I wasn't here for that.
Sorry, yeah, please, if you would, do your disclosures.
I did speak to applicant's counsel.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one, too, for the record. The motion was made by Ms. Mamanu and seconded by Mr. Cohen. Cohen, thank you. Brad.
Mr. Cohen. If you'll go ahead and call the roll, please. I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Good night.
All right. Next up is case... Next up is case UDPT23007. Oh, there you go.
Hello. Okay, hi. Good evening, Chair members of the board. Carleen Devonish with Development Services Department. This case number is UDP-T23007. This is an amendment to the Unified Land Development Regulations, particularly the public, the Notice Procedure section of the Code 4727. And this is an amendment to change the public participation requirements for site plan level two developments. Short and sweet, so for the site plan level two projects, we are now proposing to require that the applicant notify the civic associations within 300 feet of the project site, of the date, time, and place of the Development Review Committee meeting, or DRC. The notice type will be via regular mail or by email, and the notice has to be done at least 21 days before the DRC meeting. For development projects that are in the Regional Activity Center zoning districts or land use, they will need to notify the civic associations within 300 feet and the property owners within 300 feet of the date, time, and place of the project presentation that the applicant themselves would have to put together. For the notice for the civic association, it will have to be the regular mail and email. And for property owners, it'll just be regular mail. And this will have to be done at least 30 days before going for preliminary DRC approval. That is it, basically, for that amendment, and I'm here for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions of the city?
I do, Chair.
Go ahead, Marilyn.
Yes, I have a question. I noticed also that in Section 47-27C, for consideration of site plan level three, which is the current code, you removed the words rezoning requests and right-of-way vacation requests. That was not my understanding of what this was for. Can you explain why you're proposing that?
I will, absolutely. So those sections are already, the rezoning section and the vacation section already has their own subsections that also provides the notice requirements for them. So it's redundant to provide both.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, we will open this up to public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to be heard, please announce yourself. Seeing hearing none, we'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for additional discussion and/or a vote. Or a motion, not a vote.
Motion to approve.
Patrick made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mamanu. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Vice Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Third case, case UDPT23008. Cheers again.
That's me again, Carleen Devonish. So this amendment is for the Section 47-29, which is Administration and Board. This amendment is proposing to change the number of years that Planning and Zoning Board and Historic Preservation Board members would serve. The purpose for this amendment is to align with the City Commission terms, which was changed a few years ago. Originally, it was from three years to four years. And so we are only proposing to align it with the City Commission terms. That's it. I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions of the city?
I have a question. Not that I'm looking for a four-year gig instead of a three-year gig, but how does that affect the current members of the board?
Shari, do you?
Well, it would be effective as of the date that the resolution is passed, well, ordinance is passed. So after that, they can apply the four-year. So I'm not sure where you are in your terms, but after that, it's effective.
So anybody who is appointed after the effective date gets a four-year term and will figure out some, and we maintain our current terms?
Correct.
You maintain your current...
You do maintain the current term.
Well, no. Well, the thing is, is that once this is adopted, then you have your four years. So let's say you're in year one, and it's four. It's now four.
What if you're in year three?
Year three, then it's now four.
Four more?
No. Just four total.
You get one more.
Just four. So it really does affect all of us up here? Yes.
We're all signing on for more time.
Depends when they pass it.
Well...
If it passes, we all get one more year. We all get one more year sentence.
Whoopie. Okay, I just wanted to understand.
I like having you around. Stay.
Are there any other questions of the city? Hearing and seeing none, we'll open up the discussion to the public. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public portion of this, bring it back to the board for additional comment or a motion.
This is Steve. I have still a question on the length of terms for existing and how it works. So this is to align it with the commission term. And the commissioners will be reelected in 2024, November or some, right? Am I correct with that?
I'm not following that. I don't do that very well.
Okay.
What's happening with that.
So this is to align our terms with the commission terms. And this current commission, I'm sorry, the term for these current commissioners is up in November of 2024. And new ones will be elected or they'll be reelected. Does that mean every one of us, no matter what's left, we expire on that and then start a new four-year term?
That's not what this amendment states. It just simply says that you have four years.
Oh, it says four years. I thought it said to align with the commission.
No, the purpose was to align with the commission. But no, it will not re...
Thank you.
It says, yeah. It says, members shall serve for a period of four years from the date of your appointment. So it's a total of four. So it doesn't say anything about the commissioners.
Okay.
So it really isn't to align with the commissioners. It's simply to extend from three years to four years because they happen to have four years. We're not aligned with the commissioners.
Correct. I think I should have used a different term. Correct, yes. Sorry.
Aligning with the fact that they're four years, and now we're going to be four-year.
Yeah.
So will they align us with the pay as well? Will we be getting the same pay? I'm working here, guys. I'm working.
I want to double, I want to double my salary.
It should eventually align, though, because a lot of us get, you know, new appointments, right? So a commissioner comes in, appoints somebody new, it's four years.
Over time, perhaps.
So over time, I think it'll sink a lot better.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Patrick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Marilyn Mamanu. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco? Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any communication to the City Commission?
I don't know that it's a communication, but I would like to inquire about something that we talked about at one of our last meetings. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the last meeting, but the prior meeting, we had talked about the issue of what happens when there's a split vote. And you made an excellent suggestion, Chair, that in order to have an intelligent discussion, we should have something prepared by council so that we could at least look at it to inform the decision. And I was just wondering, what is the status of that document that you had requested?
Yes, I'm looking at it right now. I got very worried with it. It's about four pages. So I just want to proofread it a little bit more before I email it to you all. If you don't mind to give me one more month, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Sure. Just checking.
No problem.
Mary?
Yeah, I have a question, something I've been wondering about. A couple of months... Okay, I've got my mic on. A couple of months ago, a couple of people, I know Jay was one, maybe Brad, were not here, and they weren't able to attend remotely. And I'm wondering what the rule is on that and when that began. So just because, the first time I was on Planning and Zoning was a long time ago, okay? It was so long ago that the new idea was that you could attend remotely. And we had this whole conversation. It was limited so many times, it was kind of ridiculous when you look at it in today's terms. But I'm just wondering, it seems like we might be backsliding here.
My recollection is that in order to vote, you had to be present in person, that you could participate telephonically, and you could weigh in, but you were not allowed to vote. That's my understanding.
That's how it was.
So I'm just trying to find the resolution that I sent you, Jay, if you'd a moment. But basically, what it says is that you can only appear and essentially vote on the minutes and maybe a communication to the commission, but you can't vote on or participate in quasi-judicial items, which are pretty much most of yours. So, or even an ordinance, you can't do that either. So, you know, my personal opinion on it is, as long as quorum is here, I don't understand why you couldn't participate, but it's not up to me. But that is in the resolution, and I can share it with you all and read from it. I just have to find it in my email.
Can I just clarify something?
Just for one second. I just want to ask, when did that, who passed that resolution, and when was it?
So I know it was passed after we had the initial year of the pandemic. Pretty much what it did was it repealed a previous resolution. So I want to say it was either last year or the year before. But if I could just find it, then I'll tell you exactly when. I just have to look for it.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for anybody, because that was a little confusing.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for anybody, because that was a little confusing. Before the pandemic, you used to be able to participate, at least speak on items, if you were not present and participated telephonically. Then after the pandemic, or during, the commission changed it so that now you can't participate at all telephonically. So we've, to Mary's point, we've gone backwards on this in a time when we arguably should have moved forward.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's a way to weigh in, and yes, my microphone's on amazing. I don't know if there's a way for us to weigh in on this, but one of the longest hearings we had, and it was that project up by you, Steve, during the pandemic, and there were nine gazillion speakers or so, and it went on and on, and it was just fine. And we were doing that, I think, on Zoom, and the speakers came on. I just find in today's world, this is so antiquated, and having sat through when we made that change in the early 2000s, I really don't understand it. So I don't know what other advisory boards are impacted, but I, and the matter we were discussing, some of the matters we were doing during the pandemic when we were meeting on Zoom were quasi-judicial matters. In fact, many attorneys are practicing, they're having, you all can speak to this, hearings, depositions, trials via Zoom, and I don't understand why there would be this kind of a rule in today's world with the technology we have.
Can I ask a question? Is this, was this resolution changed to comport with state statute? Because I remember we were, they loosened up all of the, during the COVID, they loosened up all the participation because it was an emergency. But once the emergency was, was cleared, I believe the state went back to requiring that all people, all quasi-judicial people had to show up in order to participate. So did we have to change our ordinance because the state required us to come back? I mean, that's, that's critical to Mary's question. I mean, if we're following, if, if the state has imposed a restriction on us that says anybody at a quasi-judicial hearing has to actually physically be present to vote, then there's not much we can do except go to Tallahassee. But if that's not the case, then we could petition, if it's the will of the group, we could petition the commission to change that. It's just a resolution, right?
Yes. So essentially, what all this comes from is an attorney general opinion and a few different attorney general opinions that have been issued over the past years. And pretty much what it says is that physical quorum needs to be present, and that's what it consistently has been saying, and that's what all cities typically require. As far as other folks that are not a part of the quorum, there is no state statute that I know of that mandates that you be here. So the, that essentially is coming from the resolution from the City Commission, which was adopted on November 5, 2020, and is Resolution 20-214. And it states, let me just redo the pertinent part, but it says, "Except during states of emergency, it is not, and it is not a quasi-judicial proceeding or matter requiring a public hearing by law ordinance," you can't, essentially you can't, you know, participate, which is where it goes very broad. So essentially, all you're doing is voting on the minutes. That's it.
Would you say that again?
And that's for all committees and boards.
And that's, and that's because of the city.
You said something about it's not a quasi-judicial.
Right. It's written, it's written just a little bit different, this resolution, but essentially what it's saying in the very beginning is it said, "A member who is physically absent from City Commission Board or committee meeting may participate through the use of communications technology if," and then it's stated in the negative. So it has to be during a, an emergency, you know, through the governor, et cetera, that sort of thing. Otherwise, you're just voting on the minutes, and you can't participate in the, even the ordinances that Carleen just asked for a recommendation on. You can't participate in that.
So could, could we then ask the commission to reconsider this ordinance?
Yes, this resolution, you can.
Okay. Well, that's something we might want to think about.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, I think for the bulk of what we do, and we've proven it because we did it during the pandemic, and we had successful hearings. I know, I know Tricia might not agree, but we had a long conversation on historic preservation, for example. So we, we have done it. Physical quorum is pretty standard in other, other governmental groups where I sit on boards, the physical quorum has to be present, but I've never heard of anybody excluding someone because, from participating in a conversation because they're not physically in the room in 2023.
I think the only.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the only thing you need to add is probably, so what is it? Is it, if you miss three hearings, then they consider throwing you off the board or something like that? So maybe.
Not considered. It's mandatory.
So maybe it's, you can only appear by Zoom three times. You don't want people just appearing by Zoom just to appear by Zoom. So I would imagine that we would recommend that it can't be more than three times that you can appear by Zoom.
They already have, there's already outlined, like, limitations on, on participation, right?
There's an attendance resolution that's separate, but I think there's probably three issues that you probably should communicate clearly to the commission, whether or not, one, you want to participate, two, whether or not you want to be able to vote, and then three, of course, the attendance issue, which is a separate resolution. So I think those three things should be clarified because participating is different than voting, of course.
So if it's me, I would say the first two are yes, that people want to participate and vote via Zoom, and then the third one would be that there would be some sort of limitation on how many times you can Zoom. Like, you don't want someone Zooming in for all 12 meetings. So I would say, I don't know, the three that, that you would mandatorily be off the board, I probably would limit the Zoom to those three. But that would be what my suggestion would be.
I would concur with that. I think that subs it up very nicely. I'm, I'm ready and willing to send that communication to the commission if it's the feeling of the majority of the board or hopefully consensus of the board, not a majority.
Yeah, and I just would just think if we could have, Mike, if you're there to explain this or somebody else, but I would just ask your office, do you participate in Zoom? And I, I'm just like so amazed at how the whole legal world has, has, has changed. So I find it really amazing that we've just gone back in time. It's like the 1990s.
I'm, I'm seeing a little bit of the opposite, for whatever it's worth, where there's retraction, where people are requiring people to come back into the office and that kind of thing. So I, I find it a disservice to the applicant and the people who spend all the time doing their presentations. My recollection of the meetings during the pandemic was that it was, for me personally, on some cases, difficult to follow along. There were some presentations that weren't posted correctly and, and then had to be corrected. And I, I, I'm not a, I'm not a Zoom person, never have been, and so I, but I also see and talk to people who are going back into the office, and I actually had a meeting with some lawyers today that are in the main, and I said, "How many square feet less did you take than over 200 each per hour?" And they said, "We took the exact same number of square feet. They originally were going to go smaller," and they said they saw that they were requiring people to come back to, to, to the office, so.
But that's a little different than hearings and, and some of the other legal proceedings that are occurring via Zoom. I, I think if you're not comfortable doing it, you don't have to do it, but if you are comfortable, it's an option. As for changes that are made to a presentation, sometimes that's almost easier to do on Zoom where you can just throw it on the screen, and you don't have to have a photocopy machine than it is in person. But I think, you know, it's probably an individual thing. This gives us the option of doing it, but it doesn't require anybody to do it.
If I could, so when I first, the way this went down is I made the request, and Ella told me, "Jay, you're only allowed to do this," like, I don't, I don't remember the amount of times. It was like one time or two times a year, and it has to be one of these approved reasons. And I had an approved reason, and then we had the meeting, and then the city attorney reached out and said, "Actually, you can't participate at all unless you want to just be part of the minutes." So I decided not to attend. So it seems like there's already some sort of structure in place for when this could be used, and, you know, sure, there's black and white of, you know, allowing Zoom completely and, and not allowing it at all, but I think if we just use the infrastructure in place for when telephonic participation is permitted and extend that to permit participation throughout the meeting as well as voting, then that would suffice for our needs.
Would this apply to all the different boards that participate in the city's network of doing business?
Yes, so the way this resolution is written, it's all committees and boards, so.
So this is not exclusive to the Planning and Zoning Board? This is historical preservation, marine.
Everybody.
Cemeteries, everybody.
Unless your request, you want to limit it to your board, but, you know, people may want to be treated equally if you try to do that.
I bet you a lot of people on a lot of boards would be interested in this as well. I kind of think, I, I'm hearing you, that, you know, that this is definitely a personal choice. When, when Zoom started, I hated it. I absolutely hated it. It was just, and I prefer in-person meetings, and I will be here if I can. But I can understand, you know, what if you're, you know, you're, you're, somebody is sick and you're taking care of your sick mother, and you should be able to Zoom in. I don't think that, I think it's, in this day and age, we should have those options. So I, I am concerned about multiple agents, multiple, having effect on multiple people who are not here and not thinking about this. So if we do, do, if we did do a, a communication to the commission, it would, I would suggest that we do it as a sense of, we think it might be a good idea, and if they decide to open it up to the other people, well, then, you know, I'm sure they'll get requests from other people to do it. I'll be right online with my board. So I, I, I would like to send that communication. Would you make that motion?
Yeah, I was going to say, if Brad's was a motion, I'm seconding it.
Brad's was great.
Is that a motion, Brad?
Sure.
May I just clarify? Is it as long as physical quorum is present?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Just making sure. Okay, thanks.
Can I just verify that we're talking about that this is a video communication and not just over a phone?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yes. Zoom.
I just want to be, I feel we should see and then DC, not just over the phone.
Absolutely.
Good, correct.
Very good.
So you want to repeat that for the ladies?
Yeah, so it is now, I'm getting older. It is a motion to allow appearance by Zoom when there's a quorum.
Three times a year.
No more than three times a year, and allow to participate and vote.
That's it.
When you say participate.
When there's a quorum physically present.
Correct. When there's a forum physically present, correct. That is the motion.
The only thing is.
I would second that motion.
The only thing is Zoom is one of the, of the type of, you need to.
Virtual, virtual.
Video, whatever. You're right. Video, video appearance.
And, and I, you know, I, Brad, I think you once were in Dubai or someplace exotic for the rest of us.
Egypt.
Egypt, thank you. And, and you were able to participate, and I think you did it telephonically. I just, I just feel like we just need to be consistent with the rest of the world. So, thank you. I'm seconding his motion.
We had two seconds.
I would draw my second so Mary can second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I didn't second it in the beginning.
It's your idea. You second.
I'll second it. Everybody second it.
All right, good.
Patrick, you want to make a motion? All right, so we have a motion by Brad and a second, 2A and 2B, and we'll give it to Mary.
Fine, give it to Marilyn.
May, may I just ask something? Does anyone want to go to the commission meeting to explain why you want this? Because it tends to go over better if someone's there to explain.
Well, I volunteer if the chair doesn't want to go.
I'm, I'm not going to go.
I'll volunteer.
Any other further discussion?
Question, did that mean to be a motion or just communication?
That was a motion, so you're going to do roll call now?
Okay. Buddy?